Hello, everyone. Call to order this Winthrop Town Council meeting for September 4th, 2024. It is currently 6:30. We're in the Harvey Hearing Room. Roll call, please.
Counselor Tassaneri.
Here.
Counselor Costigan.
Here.
Counselor Munson.
Here.
Counselor DiMarco.
Here.
Counselor Aiello.
Here.
Counselor Swol.
Here.
Counselor DeRoz is here. Forgot his glasses. Vice President Belcham.
Here.
President Wittery.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Please rise for the pledge and please remain risen after the pledge led by Counselor Swol.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing. I'd like to have a moment of silence for all victims in the Appalachia High School down in Barrow County in Georgia. Terrible tragedy today and for the nine that are wounded. Send our prayers to them as well. And I also would like to recognize the school resource officers and how incredibly brave they were and how important they are to not only their county but to our small town as well. So please have a moment of silence for the four deceased. Minutes have been circulated from the August 20th meeting. Everybody has had a chance to take a look at them. Is there a motion to approve? Motion by Vice President Belcham, second by Counselor DiMarco. Any discussion on the minutes? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Excuse me. I'm sorry. Counselor Swol.
There's a couple of typos. I'll send. Typo, okay.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The ayes have it.
Okay.
General information, public hearing. We're going to be in public comment. Just a few words on public comment. We will be holding it strictly three minutes. We will have one public comment per individual. The second public comment period, which is a long time away, will be limited to 15 minutes. Everybody who would like to speak now, I encourage you to do so. First public comment. It is open. Yes. Karen Chavis, Precinct Two.
I've been a poll worker, I guess now it's 10 or 15 years. I can't remember how long it's been, precinct five. And I have to say, yesterday, using the new equipment, we used the whole pad yesterday for the very first time. The comments from the voters was extraordinary. They were so pleased to see that. They were so pleased not to see us all sitting here with the three rain binders checking them in. I know myself, I've been using them for a while because I was fortunate to do early going as is Counselor Belcham, so she knows how good they are. Easy to use. Type in the first three letters of your last name and all your information comes right up, including if you're a Democrat, Republican, or you're unenrolled. It just worked out beautifully. And I have to compliment, as you know, I love the town clerk's office, but I have to compliment them. They had everything written down in black and white for everybody's. We had papers yesterday that I've never seen before and things to read. But I think that's wonderful.
Take a bow.
And they just made it so easy to move into this. And yesterday was the practice.
Yep.
So I know that we will do well at the presidential.
Thank you.
Thank you, Karen. Yes.
I have a question.
Just name and precinct.
Oh, Diane Sanz, precinct five. Just a question on what you just said about 15 minutes for public comment.
Second period, second public comment period towards the end of the meeting will be limited to 15 minutes tonight. Total, correct.
So if we want to address 3A issues?
If you want to talk again, it's the time limit for public comment period will be 15 minutes.
So if we want to address it now?
You can address it now.
Okay. I want to just, we haven't addressed that, I think we had an answer from Attorney Sipoleta that he said that before we could go forward with the citizens.
Petition.
Yeah, that we had to, you guys had to meet with the planning board and there were a number of steps that would delay us for days, months, actually. And that was different from the initial answer he gave us.
We're going to ask the attorney to speak before we take this issue up and he'll give his comments.
Because I have both letters here and I have the letter from Diane Vianz who's coming. And she'd be much better addressing this issue than me, but I just didn't want to let it go by and only have 15 minutes at the end.
Thank you. Okay.
Can I?
Yes.
Cassiwood House, precinct six. I went through the FOIA request, I think it was dated number 24-286. It was 1,600 pages. A lot of pages, but you can search things. And so I just wanted to point out some information that I found really helpful on 3A in there. HLC and RKG, this consultant, provided an answer as to the condo docs and people's concerns there. The email is dated June 17th, 5:54 PM from Eric Helverson to his boys James Sipoleta and Tony Marino. And it says that existing condo docs and restrictions would not now be invalid or volatile of the guidelines. They are still presumably in conformance with the existing underlying zoning under which they were approved or pre-existing non-conforming uses. But a new condominium permitted under a 3A overlay district would have to comply with zoning, just like any other development. So I think that is one of the big questions that people had. There's also an email from James Sipoleta to Suzanne Swol that says recorded condo docs that describe the layout number of units and rooms within each unit control. If one owner sought to expand the number of rooms, it would be an amazingly complicated process that would involve board approval and amendment to the plethora of condominium documents on file at the registry of deeds. Sale of the unit does not affect the status quo. I hope that helps. And then there was another email from Tony Marino to Suzanne Swol about the list of grants, and I think people have made that information fairly public already, about the total of CBD grants that we got totaling $2.5 million and the total for the past 10 years being $3.2 million. And he concludes in saying, "In conclusion, losing the grant monies will hurt Winthrop. Let me know if you need anything else." And then there's an email from Suzanne Swol to Tony Marino asking about the numbers of grants that could be subject to us losing them if we don't comply with 3A. And then the paragraph on the last page says, "Determinations of compliance also may inform other funding decisions by multiple municipalities," so EOED, education, HLC, housing livable communities, the MBTA, and other state agencies which consider local housing policies when evaluating applications for discretionary grant programs. So then it says, "Allowing HLC intricate section 3A is allowing every MBTA community a reasonable opportunity to enact zoning amendments as needed to come into compliance." And finally, there was a letter from Senator Augustus, and that was forwarded from Suzanne Swol to several other people, including Tony Marino, and that stated February 29th. And that, I highlighted one of the paragraphs at the end here, "HLC recognizes that densely populated neighborhoods may have a limited ability to accommodate new housing. Is important to note that the minimum unit capacity requirements refer to zoning capacity, not to production of new housing." Zoning is not the same as building, and we will be updating our zoning hopefully to comply with 3A, and that will not lead to any new units in town, but it would allow us to access grants that we desperately need."
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mark. Mark, with your two. And thank you for the representation. I appreciate you as my counsel. Did you say anything you want to hear, right to the public? Say anything about?
Can't disparage anyone personally.
I'm not politicking here and I'm not canvassing votes for any candidate. I do want to say when this thing started, months and months ago, what I did is I represented with the Republican Town Committee and said we unanimously voted that we were in opposition to 3A. I also said at that time, even though we are the Republican Committee, this is a nonpartisan issue. And in fact, we are collaborating left and right, shoulder to shoulder, in this effort because we think 3A is bad and wrong for Winthrop. Having said that, this way I'm not politicking for anybody, but this can only happen in a state, as a one-party state, because the elected are not afraid of the electorate. And they feel like they can crush the electorate because they have no opposition. And that's what happened. So this is the election season, and I just want to, and I'm not going to say anything against any candidate, I just want you to think about when you vote, voting and keeping in mind that a one-party state means neither side gets fair representation. I don't care if you're on the opposite side, you're not getting fair or good representation. So would you please take that into account when you go to strike your vote for whoever the candidate may be?
Thank you. I'm sorry. Yes, Marcy.
Marcy Hamilton, precinct two. First of all, I haven't been at meetings for the last couple of times, but I've been watching all of what is important to do and getting the information. I'd like to thank everybody for participating, whichever side you go on, and I think community is important and conversations are important. I'd like to especially thank Terry Delahanti, who spoke at the last meeting, who remembered that on, I don't know what meeting it was, this board voted to commit to the flooding down on Girdle Stone Tileison and Pleasant Street, along with Morton Street and Pico. I don't know who was here. And I know that these grant monies are tied into that commitment. And I still am hoping, and I will be coming to meetings to remind you of that commitment that you made to these neighborhoods. Mine in particular and others, I'm sure, are very worried about the grant monies that are coming through. And I also want to thank a lot of the people who came with their great ideas. I think there was an idea that zoning puts into their new wording that they have to, I think it was your comic, that zoning has to have.
Infrastructure.
Infrastructure and requirements put into our wording of our zonings that would be very important, that would make it another hurdle that developments or developers would have to climb over to build here. I think that's important. And I am troubled with this 3A because it is, I keep looking at my thumbnail and my thumbnail is the size of Winthrop, right? We are all, we are packed into this beautiful little town and now we have this issue. We have schools that have to be built, we have a fire station has to be built, we have infrastructure that has to be done, and we need to find the money to do that. And I know that I will depend on all of you in your wise and knowledgeable ways to come forward with the best, with the best plan. I think the planning board did a great job. And one more comment. I think I came here just to tell everybody to please use, these people are just volunteers. You know, you're volunteers. You go to meetings, you come to all sorts of decisions for your constituents, and we should be respectful and appreciative when we speak and not worm into people's private lives or private conversations or, you know, who they're talking to or who they're voting for or what they're doing. We all have one vote, right? We all in this country have one vote. You make the decision when you pull that lever, when you elect a councilperson, and be respectful of them for their service. That's all I can say. Thank you.
Thank you, Marcy. Any other public comment right now? Mr. Dawes.
Jack Dowd, precinct one. Two weeks ago at this council meeting, Mr. Aiello held the floor for approximately 17 minutes. His last diatribe was almost 90 minutes. So I don't know why you're giving Mr. Aiello the option to talk for 17 or 18 minutes and the rest of us have 30 seconds. I can't understand why you did that, but that's not a question. We did it. Mr. Aiello stated in his second act, speech where it was, that he didn't have much to do with the town of Winthrop before he joined this council. Many of us have volunteered for many different things in the town, whether it's labor, money, et cetera. I certainly have done my share. Mr. Aiello stated that he didn't do anything until he reached this group. And all of a sudden, he's hijacking town council meetings to the 217 minutes. I don't understand why he gets a preference like that. I hope he doesn't do it again. And as far as the meeting down at the planning board, Mr. Munson mentioned that we're going to lose $100 million if we vote all over the course of time, about $100 million. And he refuted, I'd like to have a list on a yearly basis of what the town gosh bigger is, besides the 2.7 that was special down at the center. I heard someone mention that it's about $100,000 a year. And as a percentage, Jim, you can do that, you have, right?
Mm-hmm.
Thank you. And it's not much money. To state something like that to a public, I almost got booed off the chair twice when you said that, John. You misstated everything all night long. So I'd like to see a little equity here about who to listen to and who is telling the facts. $100,000 a year for 10 years doesn't sound like a lot of money to me. I hope someone can put it on paper, put it in the newspaper, so everybody in the town can understand how much we're losing in grants or gaining in grants. If you could do that, thank you very much.
Thank you. Yes.
Carl, I'm precinct six. I just have essentially a question that I'd love you to answer while you, when you come up and speak. In terms of those citizen petitions going around, it's one thing to talk about today. My question is if there's going to be, let's say that it passes, you guys have both voted up. My question would be, a lot of times when zoning happens and if you try to do things under zoning, a lot of it is incredibly boring, like, hey, I want to move a flower box five feet to the right, is that okay, is it okay with zoning? My question would be, if that passes, would we have to have an election every time something like that would happen, which would be multiple times a year? That would be my worry, like if we're designated to the zones, like anytime somebody wants to move a mailbox to a different side of, like if they want to get their mail at a different location, would that be something that I have to have to vote on being living the other side of Winthrop? Because I don't really care and I don't want to have a lecture about that. Just pass it, like just let them move. So that would be my, that's my question. What is, how, what would be electoral randomly?
Thank you. Yes.
Marcus, I'm precinct two. This council has the ability, any one of you put a motion forward, and we're on top of it. We have spent way too much time on this, way too much time. We have way bigger issues in this town other than 3A, okay? I'm urging the town to make a vote tonight, all right? At the end of the day, we have debt exclusion we need to talk about, two and a half override, fire station, everything else. We are wasting way too much time on this. Either put it to the people, vote yourselves, yes or no, we don't care, okay? Because we're going to do a petition and we're going to put it to the people anyway. So, and your fourth option would be to table it until after the litigation. One way or the other, we have to stop talking about this. We have way too many issues in this town that aren't getting done because we're dragging our feet with this. Let's put it to bed. Please, vote on it.
Anyone else?
Thank you.
Yes, Mr. Tagliano. John.
Thank you. John DiTagliano, precinct five. I've been following this issue for the last few months, not as closely as a lot of other people in this group, man, so I admire all the comments that have been made by folks that have been sort of the biggest public beings. So I'll try to get my two cents in with my mic. I've lived in the town all my life, except for a few years when I worked for the city boss and doing things like running the city boss and how getting the special department, which during the 12 years of which I was a strong advocate for affordable housing, which I still am. A few years ago, for example, I coordinated the vision of the old Al Rivel School of the Highlands, 27 units of affordable elderly housing, which is a place today. That's what I made the priority. I still am. Affordable housing, advocate, you do it. But I am extraordinarily strongly opposed to the 3A issue with this at hand now. It's extraordinarily bad public policy, bad law that was put forth during the middle of the COVID crisis a few years ago, essentially snuck in through the legislative approval process when understandably the legislature was looking at other priorities like trying to keep people from dying because of COVID-19. And that's my region of how that happened at the time. So I don't blame the legislature for trying to do that. So we're kind of stuck with it right now. And one of the figures that just said, and I totally agree with that, the issue at hand for me is because you live in a democracy, you know, the thing that ought to come out of tonight's meeting is a commitment by the council to put this to a general referendum for the town so that all, so that everyone in the town can either vote this issue up or down. That's basically what democracy is all about. And that's my plea to the council, vote yes or no, what this got to, allowing the town to go forward and to implement a referendum as soon as possible, not waiting any longer for any other events to, you know, happen, whether or not, building votes one way or another or whatever. That's not our business right now. The issue at hand for me, again, is allowing 19,000 votes in the town of Munson to have to say as a ballot. Thank you.
Yes, Cheryl.
Hi, Cheryl Howard, precinct two. I just don't want everyone being complacent when they hear about paper compliance. I feel like it's a big unknown for our future of our neighborhood. And I also feel that when people say it's going to have zero impact on our town, we cannot believe that. We don't know that. Nobody knows that. So I think that's important, that this paper compliance option seems to be like, oh, we don't have to do anything. Well, we might not have to do anything today, but we don't know what the future is going to hold. So I think that's really important that we look at that closely. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, Celestra Barrett, precinct one. I just have a few questions and points. First of all, is there a precedent for voting on state policy that, with a referendum, that doesn't implicitly provide for it? So with dispensaries, it was an opportunity for a referendum vote with casinos, same thing. Is there a precedent for voting on state policy that doesn't have, you know, that already written in? Do we have a sense of what the impacts will be? Do we know what the cost is to hold a referendum vote unless we're going to be doing it in the main election in November? You know, what resources do we have against a potential lawsuit from the state? What, if anything, are we doing to adjust zoning guidelines today, right? A lot of fears have been conjured up, and I'm not saying that they're not valid, but they certainly don't apply only to 3A. They apply to any big developer that's coming into town. When we talk about infrastructure requirements, those are the things that we should be spending our time and energy and resources on right now. If we vote against 3A, whether the town council pans it tonight or at a referendum, it doesn't end it. It doesn't end the impacts and it doesn't end our dialogue with the state. We could be facing litigation. And just finally, it doesn't do anything to provide insulation against any kind of rogue development. We should be prepared to respond to any major development proposal in this town with this same degree of ire. If that's what we're going to do right now with 3A, unless we pivot, take this energy, take these resources, let's adjust our zoning, let's adjust our requirements, let's adjust our townwide policy to how we respond. I think all of this, you know, mounts up to infrastructure concerns, enough seats in the schools, enough money to support anything that's coming into town, enough utilities, right? I think we're all saying the same things. I think we're battling against each other. We have great minds, great resources, a great amount of energy. We should, I think, all the pieces are in place. The planning board's doing their job, the attorney's doing his job. I think we need to come together as a town, as a town council, and do the next steps and be prepared. I don't think we need to paint a sign on ourselves that say we want to do combat with the state. I think when the time comes to it, we have all the information, we make the decision that makes the most for us. But we've already speculated that we've been panned for grants because of our stance. So I don't think we need to paint a bigger target on ourselves. I think we need to pivot our resources and our energy.
Thank you.
Yes.
Kurt Malara, precinct two. I know there's been questions as to why we're petitioning. First of all, is our right to do it? And people might not understand why we're doing it. Citizens have the right to have their voices heard for any kind of grievances or matters that we don't agree with our leadership. So that goes at local, state, federal. You're allowed to petition. And I know some people think it's frivolous, why are we doing this? First of all, because we have the right to. Second of all, those of us who are against it have a voice and we want our voice heard. Touching upon 3A, the law, how it's written, anybody in this, sitting in here can go online and look at where it's actually worked. There is zero cities, states that have implemented this, even in Canada, that it has worked. They've had to put multiple laws in place to try and fix when they first implemented it. You go to California and look at all the laws, they had to add into it and add into it. We have guidelines, which is not a law. And it's, the state will punish us if we're not following the law, I get it. The thing is, you're allowed to fight your government to change something. Without fighting the government, you get the same status quo. So that's why we're petitioning. We do not think the government is doing the right thing for us. So, and again, go online, look where this type of law has been implemented. It has been zero effective, zero. It's actually affected low-income housing and reduced the amount of low-income housing in areas. Just look at LA. It's a simple quick search. Look at LA and see how this kind of law was put in place and it made it less affordable, less affordable units in the area. So it's important to us on note of 3A to petition, to keep fighting and taking steps to allow the citizens to speak up.
Yes, sir.
Cheryl Egan, precinct two. I would like to urge the town council to please act on this issue tonight. And let's make a vote. I urge you also to please allow the voters of Winthrop to have their voice on this and let's take this to the public vote. We, for many, many, many years, had a town meeting where we could stand and speak our mind and vote. We've had wonderful selectmen who helped and volunteered their time, just as you all are doing here, and we do appreciate it. If you feel underappreciated, please know that the people like myself that have lived here for three generations appreciate our town council, our planning board, and all of the people who make this town run. I don't make it run and none of you make it run individually. We all are in this together and we have to learn to stay together and respect one another and move this so the people can have a voice on this. I urge you most strongly. I agree that there are huge issues in our tiny little town, like infrastructure, like paving. Has anyone driven down Revere Street lately? I have, and I know they're working like demons to get that project done, and it's a big project and it's expensive. But we have to all pull together to make this issue resolved. And frankly, I have never in my life said that I do not trust my government, but I do not trust the Commonwealth of Massachusetts to say what they mean and stick with it. This law has changed four times in its history and it's only a little over two and a half years old, and it hasn't been implemented anywhere. So I say that and I thank you very much for your service and all that you do for us. You give more time than we ever give to come to these meetings. I'm very passionate about this issue. I know all of you are too. I know everyone here is very passionate about this issue. In a tiny town, we have to be. I know we're just a small group of what is out there in our town. our town, of, you know, 8,000 voters. But those people all have a right to be heard, whether they're here tonight or able to be here tonight for another meeting or whatever. But they have the right to make the circle within bounds. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
All right. I'm sorry. Attorney Nabyan's precinct two. This is, this is pretty simple. Before you tonight, you have a citizens initiative petition. We've, we've followed every step that's outlined in our charter. It's laid out for you. You made it, right? And we're on step, you know, D, D, you know, I, 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 I. Essentially, you have three options on the petition. You may either pass it without change. You may pass a measure which is stated to be in lieu of the initiative measure, or you can reject it. The passage of a measure which is in lieu of an initiative measure shall be deemed a rejection of the initiative petition. It's actually very straightforward. Okay? This is our charter. It is also what was noted, I see Attorney Sipoleta making some notes there, in Attorney Sipoleta's response to our petition, which was actually our second petition. The first one is in court. Unfortunately, we didn't succeed on that one. But we appealed it. We actually filed our notice of appeal today. We filed our appeal today, I should say. We also, good news, we filed our exempt, our exempted to move to Superior Court, which is just, I would say, a labor of love to this community and absolutely something we deserve, just like our neighbor East Boston. But because unfortunately, Attorney Sipoleta failed to name it, name his new act, which is, you know, just a rule. I gave it a name. So the act that you can choose to decide in favor of instead of our petition, again, is a rejection, is deemed an act to disenfranchise Winthrop voters. So you can, you can choose to, to refer to the planning board and then, like, continue on his list of new laws, of new ways of doing things. Unfortunately, our, for himself, my brother, and for anyone who chooses to do something like that, we are protected under the Declaration of Rights in Massachusetts, Article 19. So we will succeed in defeating that. But my suggestion to you is just simply abide by your charter.
Thank you.
Yes.
Quickly. Mike Kellen, precinct two. It is the people's right to do a referendum. In terms of what we're voting on now, what are we voting on now? If we were voting before the council was voted on anything. The council needs to approve a plan. We're not voting on whether or not we accept or reject a state law. State law is a state law. We don't get to decide which state laws we follow, which ones we don't. We're voting on a plan. So what happens when the plan goes to a vote? I guess we'll see. But my guess is, any plan that gets rejected, we'll have to come back with another plan. This is the best option for us in terms of minimizing impact. So we bring the same plan back. We vote it down again, bring the same plan back. We voted, we're into a death spiral of voting down the same plan over and over. And every time we do, you know, as Celeste said, it seems that we put more of a target on it back. So I would encourage the council to vote themselves. And if that needs to go to a referendum, that goes to a referendum. I want to highlight what Chief Delante said last week and say that that's the most spoken for I've ever felt by a leader in this town, hands down. I thought what he said was right on. And I will point out that in the majority of these initiative petitions, there have been next to no signers in the Morton Street flood plan. And a lot of the flood plans, actually. This room, although very heartfelt, and everybody's here for the right reasons, because, you know, they believe in the idea that our leaders can work for us, right? The vast, vast, vast majority of the town is out there. They are not here. They're working, they're taking care of their kids. They voted, are bored, to do basically what they feel is right. So I'm asking the town council to do what they feel is right, you know, vote with their hearts and their minds, and let the people react to whatever happens there. Thank you.
I get someone on Zoom.
Okay.
Kathleen Capuccio. Can you unmute, please?
Can you hear me?
Yes.
You can.
Hi, Kathleen. Hi, Kathleen. This is you, 49 Wall, come on out. Just calling to talk a couple of topics. One, with regard to a comment that was just made about who signs petitions. I would urge any member of Winthrop, if they'd like to change the charter, to have petitions be signed by certain people, that I suggest, you know, hey, you know, go talk to your counselor and say that you want the charter to be changed, that only certain people can sign petitions. Seems very undemocratic to me, but you certainly do that. So I suggest you do that. Second, to talk about condominium documents, which were referenced earlier. For those of you that were able to attend last week's meeting regarding, or, sorry, the planning board, the town council, it would be crystal clear that we do not, regardless of what Chris Boyce, because I know myself and many other people have gone through 1,600 pages, I saw the email between Chris Boyce, who's our wonderful planning board chair, and Secretary Augustus' office, and Tony. There is absolutely nothing in that that said affirmatively or legally that condominium documents do not get to be preceded by 3A. So let's just make that crystal clear. And I think that Mr. Sipoleta, he had said that last week, frankly. So that's just a fallacy. So I want people to be very clear on that. We have nothing official, legal, from Secretary Augustus' office, that states unequivocally that condominium documents in Seal Harbor are protected. So let's make that crystal clear. As for another thing that was addressed, was the MVP grant regarding the horizontal flooding down in the Morton Street area. Again, I feel like a broken record, but let's be clear. Winthrop does not have to comply with 3A until December 31st, 2024. If the state did not, for the sole reason, grant us that MVP grant because of opinions, whether they are from somebody myself, the nota 3A group, Representative Purple, our bottom representative, thank you, Jeff Purple, that's illegal. You actually cannot do that. So I urge again, if you don't think, and maybe it's true, I don't have the evidence to say that it is, but if it is true, that we were denied that grant, we should be going to the State House, the AG's office, and everywhere else, demanding evidence and why they did not give us that grant. I've heard from people that actually, again, I've heard it, not saying it's true, that there were actually some holes in our application. And that may have been why we did not get that grant. But again, let's just be clear, the state cannot legally penalize us for not being in compliance with the law. Then we don't have to be compliant with.
Thank you, Kathleen. I have to stop you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else on Zoom? All right. For...
Still open comment?
One more. Yep.
Okay, thank you. Carol Ficella, precinct four. I live in Seal Harbor. I submitted a letter two days ago to the town council and to the planning board, asking specific questions that remain unanswered. That letter will be posted on the Winthrop Facebook, so people, residents, can see what those questions are, and I'm hoping that the answers will be forthcoming. Regarding my presentation tonight, I want to talk specifically about the designated zone regarding Seal Harbor. That needs to be re-titled Seal Harbor/Fort Heath. There's been no attention given to Fort Heath. These three buildings on that property, Seal Harbor One, Seal Harbor Three, are condominiums. The third is Fort Heath, which is an apartment building with 140 apartments owned by a single person. This is very important because the impact of 3A will be different on condos than it is on an apartment building. Regarding overlay, I've been hearing minimal impact, overlay, we're getting credits for units, we don't have to build anymore. That's only to minimally comply with the state law of 3A. That says nothing about the maximum number of units that can be built on these properties. Any developer coming in wants to build the maximum because it's profitable. So this idea of just minimal is fallacy. We need to know what, and that's a question for this group. What is the maximum number for each of these zones? Governor's Park, Seal Harbor One, Seal Harbor Three, and Fort Heath, all separate, all privately owned? What is the maximum units that can be built on these? This paper compliance is a false illusion that we don't have to do anything. We may not have to by law, but easily, once 3A comes in, a developer can go to the maximum. What's that maximum? The consultant has told us, he's already recommended that we reduce the square footage from 2,000 to 1,600 square feet, watt per dwelling. That, by its very nature of change, means we can put you, more units on the same amount of land. Parking. Parking, if Fort Heath right now has 140 units, and they've satisfied parking, you build more units, which is going to be easy to do with one owner, who could easily give this out to a developer, they're built on some of the parking lots that they have. They can build multi-layers on top of the parking lots. Parking will be reduced. Is there anything in 3A that requires new development or reconfiguration of development to provide for parking? Where are those cars going to go? There's no street parking there. Seal Harbor One has to go through, basically, Fort Heath to get to their entranceway and to get to their parking garage. If you overdevelop and have more cars and less parking there, they're not going to even be able to access their own property and their own parking. In addition, as a butters, because she just said, what's the difference? State control is very different than local control. Local control is absolutely essential. We just shouldn't be handing this over to the state. We're a butters. We'll have no opportunity to challenge the development at Fort Heath as Seal Harbor residents. Because the states take in charge, they have as of right, the developer can do, without a hearing, without any kind of waivers. The impact will be significant on Seal Harbor. Planning board says it has power in zoning. I'd like to know what that power is, because the law basically diminishes their power. Lastly, the grants, that MVP is not one of the four original grants under the law. It's an add-on by the executive branch, which is illegal. They don't have the authority to add on 10 more grants. It's being challenged in Milton. The Supreme Court will decide. Before you throw us under the bus and decide that we can't, you know, we're losing all this money. And I'd like to know where the flood management, what grant covers flood management? We're making all these assumptions. Where are the facts that flood management falls under? Certainly not under the first four grants. Where does it fall under the other grants?
All right. Thank you. Thank you very much. Thank you.
Let the citizens know.
Thank you.
Christian Bonapine. Want to unmute, please?
Can you hear me?
We can.
Christian Bonapine, precinct five. I just have to echo what has been said by Kathleen Carroll, especially with regards to the condo docs. I think that unless we have something on state letterhead, we really don't know the full effects and ramifications of what I see as a disastrous zoning, whatever you want to call it, policy. So I think that needs to be something that we get and then give it to all the residents, owners, whoever owns Seal Harbor and Governor's Park, as well as the owner of Fort Heath. Thank you.
Thank you, Christian. All right. So before we move on, I just want to say a few things. And I've been told many times my communication skills aren't great, mostly by my wife. So just again, to go over the process, where we are now. So the planning board has their recommendations. They are waiting to hear back from RKG on a couple items. They will then come together, they will vote on their recommendation, they will send it to the state for a cursory review. They should get that back within a three to four week period. At that point, they will vote their recommendation, approve their recommendation, they will give it to the council. This should be as early as the end of September, as late as the first or second week in October. At that point, that will come to us. We, we don't have anything to vote on as of yet. We can't, and it was said earlier, we can't vote to accept or reject 3A. 3A is the law. What we're voting on is to accept or reject the recommendation from the planning board. So if we choose to not accept the recommendation from the planning board, then we would technically be out of compliance with the law. If we, and if we prove, if we voted yes to accept the planning board's recommendation, we would be in compliance, and the citizens would have that absolute right to get a petition, get it on a ballot. There was a question earlier about a cost of a ballot. I think it's roughly $20,000 for a special election. Nothing if, you know, except for the cost of the ballots, if we had to do a separate ballot on an existing election. So that's where we are right now. So again, we, we have nothing to vote on. We don't vote on yes on 3A, no on 3A. We vote yes or no on the recommendation given to us by the planning board, which we hope to have by the end of September, beginning of October. So thank you for that. Also, since we have a lot of people here, and they might be here for a specific reason, I would ask the council to take out of order old business, which is the petition, and we would just act on the petition now. I would speak on the petition. There's a motion by Vice President Belcher to go out of order, second by Councilman Muntz, and any discussion on it? Seeing... Okay.
Discussion on the petition.
On going out of order?
No.
Okay. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those know, the ayes have it. So there is a petition, and I'll read the petition that I'm going to ask.
Can we get Diana to come in here? Diana, come in.
We need Attorney Sipoleta. I'm going to read the petition, and before I make a recommendation on the petition, I'm going to ask Attorney Sipoleta to speak on the petition. So this is states to the Honorable, the Town Council of the Town of Winthrop, petition that the Town of Winthrop zoning ordinances be amended by inserting a new section 17 dot 04 dot 06 0, containing the following language. One, any plan to be considered and/or voted upon in order to comply with General Archout the 40 section A, section 3A, titled multi-family zoning as of right in MBTA communities, also known as MBTA Communities Act, and/or associated guidelines in the Executive Office of Housing and Livable Communities as currently in effect or as amended, shall be voted upon by the registered voters in the Town of Winthrop by ballot question and not by the Winthrop Town Council. Two, any final approval of proposed changes to the current Winthrop zoning laws or districting in order to comply with General Archout the 40A, section 3A, shall be by ballot question, voted upon by the registered voters of the Town of Winthrop. So that's the petition that's brought before. I have a recommendation to make. Before I do that, I'm going to ask Attorney Sipoleta to give us an opinion on this petition.
Okay. Thank, thank you, Mr. President, Honorable Counselors. For the record, James Sipoleta, Town Attorney. I want to speak on only the very narrow issue of the direction and the road that this petition should take or may take, and what the council can or can't do with it. And just, just to make sure that everything, everything is done correctly. Yes, you have, you have to vote on this. I shouldn't say have to, but in, in the law, in the charter, you have three options: accept it, reject it, or amend it. That's undisputed. So it's going to come before you, and you're going to have to take some action on it. And you have to take some action on it within the time allotted by law. And you're receiving it tonight. Tonight, start... Tonight starts the clock. Unfortunately, or fortunately, in my reading of the case law and the way that the petition is drafted, this is a petition asking the council to adopt an amendment to Section 17 of our bylaws. Now, Section 17 is the Winthrop Town zoning ordinance, and we get that through Chapter 40A, which is the state zoning statute. Now, yes, you can grant this petition. You do need to vote on it. You need to take some action on it. But maybe unfortunately for some, and maybe the timing isn't great, but there's a provision in the state statute that says, and it's Chapter 40A, Section 5, that says that a petition such as this for the amendment, or the enactment, or the adoption of a zoning measure can only be done in one way. Now, it can come before you by a counselor, the Board of Appeals, the Planning Board, a planning administration, or a citizen's petition, and the citizen's petition is before you, and as I wrote in my memo, it's correctly before you, and you need to act on it. As a corollary to that, though, but very important, before you vote on it, you need to follow the procedure that's spelled out in Chapter 40A, Section 5, because that is the only way that a zoning bylaw or a zoning ordinance can be adopted or amended. And as you have done in the past, when you've had to act on zoning amendments while wanting to add something or adopt a new section to the zoning code, you refer it to the Planning Board. The Planning Board has either an individual or a joint public hearing with the council. They make a recommendation, you vote. And you vote, and those, that list of options that you have are available to you. So nothing about that changes. The only thing is the intervention of the mandated Chapter 40A, Section 5. There's plenty of case law on it. There's, there are cases, even the cases that were cited to you in a memorandum that you received last week, pointing out certain aspects of the law and cases that have been decided by the SJC in the Appeals Court. And it's really interesting that some of the language in those cases say definitively that whether you, if you don't follow the process mandated by 40A, Section 5, no matter how you vote, it can be invalidated. And that's not my opinion, that's the Appeals Court and the SJC. Were it not to be so, but that's the way it is. Is it going to drag out the timing? I don't know, I don't think so. But I don't think that you can take final action on this petition or any zoning petition until you have those public hearings and have the public have their say at a public hearing as was conducted by the Planning Board and jointly with the council most recently, and I think that there may have been one last month, too, where the Planning Board had to have a public hearing so that the public can learn what's being inputted into the process, the Planning Board and the council can hear opinions and suggestions by the public, and then that the public is or should be fully informed. Then you bring it back, and you can vote on it, or you can send it directly to the ballot, or you can vote, and if the, you know, petitioners don't like it, then they can submit another petition, and that will stop, depending on what it is. It may stop that action or suspend it, have you reconsider it, and then it may go to the ballot, and then the people will determine that by a vote at the ballot box. But I think in the cases that I'm reading is that that public hearing portion gives not only the council, but the people who may subsequently be voting on it, knowing exactly what they're voting on, because there's a full and complete airing of all of the issues. Now, probably all of those issues have been identified, and everyone who's been coming to the meetings has had a chance to address and to answer questions. I know I've heard a number of questions that were very good questions this evening that may not have been fully answered yet, because we're not in that public hearing stage. And that's, that's what the state statute says, says this is how, that the procedure for adoption or change of zoning ordinances, this is the only way that you can do it, the only way. Now, that doesn't apply to revoking an action of the council. Let's say the council enacted something after a public hearing and a vote, and a group of individuals, and maybe it's 12%, however how many people it is, and they sign the petition, and they file it, then that would, that would suspend the enactment of that, of that action. But that's on a revocation. Nothing has been enacted yet or adopted yet. So that doesn't apply. What does apply, in that latter scenario, there is no public hearing. So on the front end, what I set out in my brief memo is my view, and my very strong view, based on even some of the case law that was included in the memo that you received by email, and I didn't send one out other than the instructions as how to do it, and I think it's very important to know. It doesn't matter what I think about the law, whether it's good or it's bad. I'm agnostic to that when it comes to being a lawyer, and when I have to make a recommendation to the council, as the same as making a recommendation to any other client. You know, it doesn't matter what I think. I think a lot of things about this law, and not all of them are positive. And I think that if this law, if this measure is voted on and the Town Council votes to adopt this zoning amendment that has two parts, then that vote, and you don't go through the Section 5 process, that vote, no matter what it is, can be, will be invalidated if somebody challenges it, because there's a history that's been adjudicated by the appellate courts. For those, I know there's some people who think that, oh, if you send it to the Planning Board, you know, it's going to get all bound up, and you're never going to be able to vote on it. Yes, you have to vote on it, you have to act on it, one way or the other, but you can't act on it until and unless you get that recommendation from the Planning Board, which you know is a non-binding recommendation. I think it can be done quickly. I think that that public hearing can happen as a joint public hearing, and then all you're doing is you're just checking that box. And so that removes the impediment that the Attorney General or someone else is going to come down and say, oh, no, you have tried to bypass that process, that is state law that supersedes our zoning bylaw, and in fact, it's the law from which we derive our Winthrop zoning ordinance. So, I mean, process, sometimes, you know, we wish that things went more quickly, that we could get results more quickly, but we're dealing with a state bureaucracy, we're dealing with a number of factors that are in play. But this Section 5, there's no, there's no way around it. There are several people, several cases where petitions have been, have been submitted to councils or boards of selectmen, and they tried to skirt it and said, well, this is really not a zoning measure. And the courts have said, you can't circumvent that by calling it something else, and this has all the earmarks of a zoning measure. As a matter of fact, it, the petition itself, and I'm not criticizing the petition because they have every right to do this, to ask you to consider this, but even in the title, Initiative Petition Against MBTA Zoning, zoning compliance, there's number one use of the word zoning. And then moving down to 1704.060, which would be the new section inserted into our zoning code, that's a zoning amendment. 40A, Section 3A would be a new section that would encompass both of these, number one and number two, that the president had read, in that any final approval of proposed changes to the current Winthrop zoning laws, already in the petition it says, change to the current zoning laws. This is a zoning measure. Sorry, that's, that's the way it is, but I think it can still be dealt with in an expeditious manner, and however you vote, you vote on this. And this doesn't ask, in, by its terms, for someone to vote against 3A, it just says, who is going to make the determination on 3A? And I think the quicker that that's done, if we get, you can get the Planning Board together, and you can have the public hearing, and they can make a recommendation, and you can vote. You do it, you know, whatever that, those three and maybe four options you have, those are still at your disposal. So I would err on the side of caution because I am confident that if you skip over that 40A, Section 5, we're going to get criticized, it's going to be invalidated, and then where are we? So there was one, I was writing down something that I really, I really feel strongly about because I hear this from both sides, and I listen to what, what people have to say. And it's very laudable that there's such a robust debate, and there is such, you know, probing and intelligent and necessary questions. And I'll just parenthetically say, healthy skepticism of government is a good thing. And I think that's, I really believe that's true. I mean, you have to be skeptical. And I don't think that anybody here lacks skepticism of some of the stuff that's coming down out of our state government, and indeed, our federal government. So you need to pay attention, and it's healthy, and we're having healthy debates, but I don't take a side on this. I just have to call it, I'm the umpire, I call the balls and strikes. And the thing that I always, and always impressed me was that what Plato said, that if you do not take an interest in the affairs of your government, you are doomed to be the under-the-rule of fools. And I don't see any fools in this room. And, you know, and so I think the people behind us, whether they have, behind me, I think no matter what their position is, I believe that they all believe that it's the right thing. I think, though, there's a path forward to getting this done and done correctly, and whether you put it to the voters and the voters say no, or you just vote and say, no, we're not going to do this on 3A, I'll defend it, whatever it is. So, you know, it's left to your knowledge, your experience, your integrity, your confidence, and your ability to have discourse with each other, to find, and as I talk to people, and I even talked to the attorney who was putting forth and doing a lot of work on this thing, there's a lot more commonality in place here than I think is readily visible. And I think, I think there's, and one of the things is, everybody has, seems to have the benefit of the town as a priority, because everybody's trying to protect the town. And there's just, you know, a different view of what the better way is to do that. So however this goes, I think you need to do that really quickly with the Planning Board, put, you know, make your decision now, and if you find that there's some leak that comes out of the court system, no, like, that never happens, that maybe one of those two pieces of litigation, maybe the Milton case, is going to be adjudicated, and a decision is coming out before we need to have a vote on it, one way or the other, then maybe a strategic, you know, plan can be, you know, cobbled together really quickly to say, wait, you know, this is coming out, and this is going to be something that could affect us. And I, and we have this discussion all the time. What if we do something, we make a decision today, and on November 15th, the court says, in the Milton case or in some other cases going up, there's more than one, something that's different from what we adopted? Well, yeah, we can un-adopt it, but sometimes it's, it's wise to get a real good look at the tea leaves if we can get to see them. And right now, I can't see what, what the court's going to, going to decide on that. But, you know, these are a lot of things the council has to think about, but the one thing that you need to think about is, you know, getting it before the Planning Board, get the recommendation, whatever it is, make your vote, and get on with it. So I'd ask you to just abide by that memo that I sent, because I think it's the safest way.
Thank you. And I will be referring this to the Planning Board, or we'll ask them for an expeditious public hearing.
Counsel President, is that a rejection? Is that a rejection on the petition? If we're sending it to them?
That's a demarcot. I'm giving, I'm referring this to the Planning Board for an expeditious public hearing, which would be a joint meeting with the council, and the council can act on this as soon as we get it back, which should be quick.
Yeah, quick, quick. And I just, I anticipated that question coming. No, it's not. You're not rejecting, you're not rejecting, you have to reject, reject. You just have to follow the procedure. When you come back, then if you want to reject it, you can reject it.
Or accept it.
But you can't do it now, or accept it, right. But really, nothing, nothing can happen before that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Moving on.
Give me professional courtesy, the only other attorney in the room, that's the two minutes?
This minute is off. No, you have two minutes of public.
Okay, don't worry, that is the rejection, Denise, we expect, because it's a supplemental petition.
Thank you. Public comment, correspondence, Correspondence Denise.
Okay, I have Clara Aroa Ave, sorry, don't know your name, Allison Dewar, and Scott Mahoney Wright. They support the Town Council to accept the paper compliance that the state is offering. Cassie with us, asked the TC, the Town Council, to reject the citizens' initiative petition, allow the Town Council to vote.
Please, Little DeCombe.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Donna Segretti Riley just thanks everybody for all the hard work that they're doing. And Carol Ficella, we have your, as for the questions that you want answered. That's it.
All right, committee reports, economic development, did not have a chance to meet, Public Works. They met?
No.
Can we please schedule meetings as soon as possible? They were supposed to be scheduled by now. Appointments, committees, Vice President Belcher.
Thank you. The Appointments, Committees and Commissions group worked to put together reviews of the town manager and town clerk slash council clerk per charter. They both received fabulous reviews from the council. They also received their feedback and goals for the coming year, so everything went very well, and we are very pleased to have them on board with us.
Thank you. School Department report, there has not been a school committee meeting since, and with that glowing review, Town Manager report.
Thank you, Mr. Council President. I know we've got our public health nurse here, but I was going to just give a quick update on mosquitoes. We did have a, and I know it's coming up a little later, but I'll give a quick update. We don't have any human cases in Winthrop, but I think some of us surrounding communities may. They are not going to spray, because we're not to critical yet. They only spray when we get to critical. They will take individual requests from homeowners. If you want to, you know, call in, they'll take a request, put you on the list, and try to get your individual house done. But the mosquito that did test positive here, I want to be clear, it wasn't a human biting mosquito, it was a bird biting mosquito. There are different types of mosquitoes, and these, it was a bird biting mosquito. Believe it or not, I've got a lot of experience with this, being from the South Shore and other areas, so, not the first go around. But, yeah, so that was a bird biting mosquito, so, you know, while the risk had to be elevated, you know, just people take precautions at night. I know we, you know, canceled the movie event. I would say, you know, wrap up sporting events by dusk, you know, those kind of things just to be safe, but, and Meredith will certainly jump in a little later on that, but I did want to give an update on that. We did go out, myself, Director Calah, and the Conservation Commission Chair, Kim Dimes, went out to Morton and Banks to take a look at, we priced out what sandbags would cost. You know, obviously, it's a long area, you know, about a thousand linear feet, so we're looking at potentially doing them around the homes, and also Director Calah is going to get some price as to what it would be to put the flapper valves on the asphalt pipes at the five or six spots where we have the storm, you know, catch basins there. The existing catch basins are too small to work within them, so we'd have to go behind them possibly in the sidewalk, or maybe on just off the sidewalk, create a new structure, and put the flapper valve in there. So we're going to see if we can, you know, come up with a plan, get some pricing on that, because that will help with the water coming back when we have the tidal events. Thank everybody that showed up to Kathy Dixon's retirement. That was a great event last week. Wish her well. She's officially retired, and moving forward. We did post a job for the required two weeks, and, you know, we achieved a couple of resumes, but we're going to move forward with Matt Rhodes, so he'll be the new COA director, so we're happy about that. And I was, I have an appointment, or myself or someone else, on the Climate Commission. I did have a meeting and talked to Tom Redarian. He's going to be, appointed him last week onto the Climate Commission, so he'll sit, take my role on there and represent me on the board, so they, I think, meet in a couple of weeks, right, Tom? Next meeting?
Yes, they're meeting on the 16th.
Sixteenth of September is their next meeting, so.
Yes.
Tom will get sworn in and go there. We are in, you know, the REC is, for people who don't know, we have our joint group with Revere for our dispatch, emergency dispatch, the calls go there, and the REC is working on getting some 911 money to redo, because right now, it's, how's out of the Revere Police Station, it's getting a little crowded there. So they're looking at their, one of their old elementary schools, they're going to redo, make it, half of it will be a daycare, the other half will be the REC Center. We're applying for grant money for that. One of the keys to that is when we expand the REC Center is to try to grab a third community. We've certainly been in talks with surrounding communities, trying to get that third community, because when you get to that third community, you're allowed to access more grant money for capital needs, less cost of the assessment for the town, so there's a lot of benefits to that. So we're really pushing hard to find that third community. We're not there yet, but we're getting close with a few communities, so we'll see. I think that's, yeah, I'll lay out. So I'll certainly take some questions from the council.
A couple of things, and I'll open it up. Watertower Hill, I know I've spoken to Director Calah about it, I'm getting a lot of calls on just increased pest activity up there. Not sure exactly what it is. I know Council Calah is on it, as is Inspection Services.
Yep.
But just want to see if we could get any information or updates on that, if you could put that on your radar.
Sure.
Also, my congratulations to Kathy Dixon as well. Kathy and I are celebrating our 50th anniversary of graduating from St. John's School, so I wish Kathy the best, she's done an awful lot for our town, and I wish her nothing but the best. Also, we'll talk about it in a few minutes, but you'll have a firehouse questionnaire update, okay, because we want to get that out.
Yeah, I waited till the panel.
I'm just going to go around the room if there are any questions. Consul de Ross.
Thank you. Quick question, Tony and maybe Meredith, since you're here, you might be able to weigh in. Selfishly, I, as you may know, help coordinate the yoga classes on Sunday mornings on Winthrop Beach, and reading the paragraph in the guidelines about rescheduling events, sounds like we're still okay for a 9:00 AM Sunday morning beach yoga? I would hate to keep the classes, we have three left, and have somebody get bit and hurt, but it sounds like, based on your recommendation, 9:00 AM Sunday, still probably okay?
Yeah, I think so. They're not usually hyperactive at that point. I would probably just reevaluate if there happens to be a heavy rain the night before.
Okay, got it.
And I did talk to mosquito control today, just to follow up on that. I mean, we're, you know, we're about two weeks out, right? I mean, the first frost, they die, I mean, we get the cooler temps now, it's in the 50s in the morning, so that helps. So, yeah, the morning time is probably definitely the better time, because, you know, the cold temps sort of, you know, lull them into submission there, so, all right.
Got it.
And Consul Swope.
Needless to say, I'm disappointed in the decision to send us back to the planning board, but I do have a question about the role in Three A, so that we just are really clear about what's going on here.
Yeah.
It goes back to, now it goes back to the planning board? How much time do they have to get back to us?
They have to schedule a hearing. I mean, they have to, whatever that timeframe is, there's no.
So this is essentially a rejection on the petition?
No. The town attorney said, then you took action on it, the action was to refer it to the planning board, the planning board will have the necessary hearing.
Yeah, I know he planned to do this, but that's not what our charter says. Our charter says you have three ways to do this. You can accept, reject, okay.
Again, I, well, I'll disrespectfully disagree. You have to have the hearing, otherwise, when it gets to the AG's office, it'll get kicked back, so you have to. This is a change in zoning, they're asking, the petition's asking a change of zoning.
No, it's not a change of zoning. This is not a.
It actually is a change of zoning.
No, the petition doesn't ask for that. The petition just asks for the town to be able to vote.
By changing the zoning.
No.
It absolutely asks to change the zoning.
No, I disagree. Thank you.
Consul Yello.
Tony, just a couple of follow-up issues. I think Consul Belcher asked at the last meeting about the charter changes that we had voted on in the spring.
Yep.
Have we heard anything further from the AG's office?
Yeah, we got the approval back.
We did get the approval?
Yeah, we're all set, all approved, and they're in, part of the, all the, everything you voted on is on now, can be acted on.
Now can be acted on, okay. I think it would be great to put something on the front page, remind people what we voted on, and what the significance of the changes.
We're going to do an update.
Some of those are really terrific, so that's good. Congratulations. Second, have, I think, Consul Costigan, and then a number of us, seconded the notion of making sure that we get on let ahead the wide variety of questions that have been asked for the owners of the condominiums up in Fort Heath and in Governor's Park, to get those responses on let ahead from either the AG's office or the general counsel of the Housing Department. Have we, we were able to rec, I know it was a long weekend since we last met.
Still calling them, still trying to put pressure on them to get that, yeah. We haven't got an answer yet.
Have we, have we put that request in writing to them again, so it's dated and they understand we're needing it? Because I really think it's on the critical path of any decision-making.
I know, they've been on the phone, I'll make sure that he sends an email, we'll make sure it's an official request, but, yeah, we've been constantly, they know what our request is, we're trying to get it out of them.
I just don't see how, without those, answering to those questions, I don't see how we can opine on what the planning board sent us, because that's a major risk issue. And I know Ms. Fisagella had a whole series of things, but one of the more, which we should attend to, and that should be, many of those things should be on the list for the AG to opine on, but for the planning board separating out the Fort Heath apartments and the idiosyncrasy of that being one owner as opposed to condominiums and condominium documents, it would be good to get the planning board articulate how that building and grounds are affected differently from the condominiums. I thought there was a good point there, I hadn't thought about that before. I don't know, were you here when she was mentioning that?
I did, yeah, but there's, I mean, it's an overlay district, so there's no change to Fort Heath, because Fort Heath wasn't created with the MBTA Three A zoning, so that's, yeah, that's, I mean, we'll get the answer, but that's not going to.
Explain, can you explain that?
It's an overlay district. You have to create the, like they said in the emails that were read earlier, you have to create the project with the overlay district. You know, these projects weren't created with the overlay district. The overlay district there is an option, if they choose to demolish those buildings or do something different, but they, you can't just pick and choose what you want to use. The overlay district's there for, you know, for new construction.
That's correct. So if you wanted to redevelop the site, the zoning that we're going to put in place will limit it to the number of units that are there today, is my understanding.
It'd actually be less, MBTA is less.
Less units.
For both Fort Heath and Seal Harbor, yeah. That was part of the presentation the other night.
Yeah, I just think we need to have some clarity on that. Thank you.
Consul Demaco.
Yeah, before I say what I want to say, sorry. Before I say what I want to say, I just want to say, it's great to see so many people in here, and I know all of you represent different sides of the issue. Just look around, this is a community, all right? Remember civility, remember we're all in this together. We might have different ways to get to the solution to our problem, but we are a community, and it's great to see everybody here. I want to echo Consul Swope's comments. This is, respectfully to our attorney, this is not a zoning petition. This is about voters' rights. The planning board does not decide that. This process should be over. We should have taken a vote on this tonight. This is the perfect example of when Ronald Reagan said, government isn't the solution to our problems, government is the problem. So, thank you.
Thank you. Just wanted to follow up. I don't think there's been any changes to your role in the DEP situation. Do we have any updates on that?
No, the draft plan came back, went to DEP, we're just waiting to get back on that comments to make sure it meets the, you know, outline that we laid out, and, you know, with the meeting that we had out there, so we're just waiting for those comments back, and then if there's any changes to make, then we'll have it finalized hopefully.
Awesome, thank you. And I just wanted to ask, while we have the, on the agenda, I don't know if this is something that would come from you or a change to the agenda, but if we could keep updates on Conservation Commission stuff, the same way we do about other policymaking boards, I think that would be a good addition. I know they're super active, and we don't hear a lot about what they do, so I'd just like to keep them more front of mind. So that's more a general note than for the town manager. That's all, thank you.
Consul Mencia.
Thank you. I wanted to first thank the town administration and the DPW for taking care of all the sidewalks. I go around on my bike and walk and make sure that there's a lot of, any of the things that is dangerous to walk on, and they nailed them all up. They really did a great job, and so I have to give kudos to them. It's a team, and it's a long process, but it gets done. So if you find anything where you're tripping or you're biking and you're scared to, like, you're going to break your rim or spokes or whatever, just put in that sidewalk click, so sidewalk fix.
Se click fix.
Se click fix. Se click fix, thank you. I'm done, I just forgot the actual term. So anyway, want to thank you guys for that. I also want to mention and kind of reiterate something that Consul Belcher asked for last week's meeting, if there was any way we could get an injunction on the deadline for Three A, simply because we don't, if we have two cases with Rockport and Milton kind of ongoing, and they can totally change our decision-making process, is there any way we can get an injunction or a delay filed to delay that process?
We can ask, yeah, I mean, we'll go through the process, I'll take a look at it. I know all the communities are going to vote later, I'm not sure if they're asking for an injunction, but they've let, you know, the Executive Office of Housing and Living Communities, I know Hamilton's one of them, they're not going to vote on this until their Springtown meeting, and they know they won't be in compliance as of December 31st, and a few others, but I'll find out.
Because, I mean, I wanted to speak to the town and some of the petitioners, I mean, I absolutely support the right of the citizens to vote for this, vote for or against Three A. It's your right, and if you're doing the right things by doing the petition correctly, you should absolutely have the right. And so I am 100% for that. The only stipulations I might say is if we could, you know, I do think, I believe in process too, and following the law and the rules, we won't be able to make any progress tonight if we were to vote yea or nay, because it would simply not be a legitimate law. So I think we have to follow the steps, but when it comes to a vote on whether the townspeople of Winthrop can vote on Three A, you've got my support 100%, and I know I will do my best to get everyone else on board with that. I do, I do want to make a clarification, last week, we had that joint committee with the planning board, and I did make a, I was trying to get you to help me come up with the financial impact of a yes vote or a no vote. And so I did some quick math in my head while in front of a lot of people, and so I was just basically taking the 1.6 million grant that we lost this year, multiplied that by three, and added all the law, the legal costs of having to fight a lawsuit from the state, and ended up being around $5 million, not $100 million, like some people in the audience stated. So I estimated that, but I simply don't know, and so I just retract that last estimate, and I just want to, you know, say that this Three A vote does have a financial impact. It is very much not just an ideal, or a principle, or a dignity issue, this is real dollars affecting real people in real homes. So it will eventually end up being millions of dollars over the course of three years, and it will actually cost people's neighborhoods to not be protected the way they would if we did get those grants. I am a counselor, and my job is to protect my precinct and my constituents, and that is what I intend to do, is support that effort. So I'm hoping we can all see that this is a big-time vote, and that's why I think it's great that everyone has the ability to vote on it, because 19,000 people is better than nine.
Consul Costigan.
Again, a lot said here tonight. I'm in full agreement with Consul Swope.
This is just a question for the town manager, right?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Just have a question.
Yes, well, let me start with my question there. I'd like an update on the McGee's Corner pedestrian lights, if possible.
Waiting on some pricing back from the state, we've asked them to price out what it would be to put it, whether it's a permanent fix or a temporary fix until we can do the construction work, so we're just waiting to hear back from the state. They haven't got back to us with numbers yet.
Okay, okay. With regards to Three A, Town Manager, I also believe it to be a, not a zoning issue with regards to the question itself, and I'm in agreement with, also with Consul Munson, and with regards to the let ahead by Consul Yello, still waiting for that. And Town Manager, we've had multiple meetings now with regards to IKG, we've had multiple meetings, you know, with the planning board, and I respect all of their decisions, believe me, but it has gotten us nowhere. It has gotten us nowhere. Carol Ficella is just passionate about this, it affects her the most, and Consul Swope is, needless to say, having to live in those districts with everyone, needless to say, her phone's ringing off the hook. As Mr. Caruccio said, Town Manager, we're all Americans here, we're Democrats or Republicans. I'm a Democrat. I know you're a Republican as well. We're all Winthropites here, as well. So I just want you to take into consideration, this petition involves all of Winthrop here, and, you know, and with regards to the cost of this, $16,000 to $20,000, guess what? That's a dollar per person in the town of Winthrop. I think we'd afford that. And with regards to the money attached. The money attached to the flooding, which needless to say, some comments were made at the last planning board meeting, and some other people. A lot of that flooding issue has to do with neglect to our drainage systems. I mean, how much money are we going to throw to consultants here, when we could be using that money ourselves and maybe have, maybe we'll do it ourselves with the amount of money we're spending? So let's start to directly, directly deal with the constituents and the Winthrop people who are having these problems, give them real answers, and let's see some line items and some money of how much are we spending here? I've requested this over and over and over again in past meetings for point of information. There's a lot of frustration here with regards to me getting information, let alone bureaucracies can be slow, and with that, I don't want to go too much more on a rant here, but we can do a lot more as Winthrop, and as far as Town Manager, as far as this council, we have an obligation to the town of Winthrop and the people, we have to respect everybody here, I mean, with regards to, on a national level. There's 10 states right now who have used this same process to put, you know, ballots on in regards to abortion. That's a very large issue, and a very big issue, in red states, mind you. So again, with that, I think all of the proper. So again, with that, I think all, all of the proper laws have been followed. It appears that that's what the, our attorney said tonight. And with that, to Mr. Munson, Counselor Munson's request, I think we should act swiftly. We should expedite the response by the planning board. They should hold their own executive session with regards to getting that information back to us in a prompt manner, so it's not dragged through the mud and we lose the opportunity to put it on the ballot.
Counselor Tassanari.
I would like to start by thanking the town clerk Denise Quist and the town manager Anthony Marino for the exemplary job you both do for this town and for the council and for everyone who lives in town. So thank you both very much. I think that showed in the review.
I do have a follow-up. Counsel Aiello stole my question about the, the change to the charter from, from last November. But I have another question on financial impact statements or financial impact analysis that we've been, we've been talking about a lot. I don't know if we've been able to reach out to anyone on, you know, putting 3A aside on existing capacity, which somewhere was quoted at about 900 units without 3A. What would that, you know, what, how would that financially impact the town in terms of schools, first response, and, you know, DPW work?
Yeah, ballpark pricing on that's about $15,000 to $20,000. I've checked with a few, RKG being one and a few other engineering firms, you know, that do this kind of work. So it'd be about between $15,000 to $20,000. Certainly I can get some proposals, bring it to the council. If you want to choose to fund it, that's fine. There's no extra money in the budget to do that, so we'd have to move money around. But if you choose to do that, I would, yeah, I mean, the financial impact of, you know, the plan that the planning board's looking at is pretty minimal. But if you want to look at the impact of the 200 to 300 or even more units that are coming down the pike without 3A, then yeah, that's definitely something we can do.
We definitely want to look at something like that. So if you please put together the proposal, we'll work.
Have something for, for my fin, you know, for the finance for the next meeting.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
That's all, Mr. President, that's all.
One more follow-up, Counselor, Vice President.
Thank you. Is there any way to extrapolate the data that's in that Brightly software to kind of do a cursory type of financial impact? Do you know what I mean? Have we looked at that? Instead of going out, like, because we know what it costs to maintain all of the assets in the town, right? So you can kind of...
The buildings, yeah, just the, that's limited to just buildings.
You can like roughly extrapolate a dollar amount per resident, right?
For the buildings, but like the bigger impact is, you know, schools and, you know, police and fire, that's not incorporated there.
Okay, I just didn't know if we...
Roadways, infrastructure, things like that, like that's just limited to the buildings that we own, so.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
CDIC update?
Yep, they have a, their first speaker event. I think I spoke about it before. Rabbi Benjamin Flax will be speaking Tuesday, September 24th at the Winthrop Senior Center at 6 o'clock. The title of this is Through My Eyes, a speaker series, and that's the first one. There'll be more after that. And also, they have, they're looking for another beach cleanup on a different beach this time on September 11th. And that's, sorry, yeah. So they're looking for another beach cleanup, they haven't locked in a date yet. Their next meeting will be September 11th, sorry about that. And that was all they had. I talked to Kelly Gall today, and that was what she had for an update.
Policeman, we have no updates as of now. We will have one at the next meeting. Old business, we did the petition. And firehouse update, I know, I've talked with the town manager a lot about this, trying to get a questionnaire as quick as we can. We have basically site plans for both locations, middle school as well as basketball courts. We have rough estimates for cost. We have estimates on additional work we would need to do. So the plan is to get a questionnaire out. I'm not sure what process or what menu it would be on as to how we would get that out. So we're quickly gonna go to the screen, have a very quick presentation.
Yeah, I just got, we've got a few things, just a few slides to run through, and I'm giving the council a handout here. This is a breakdown of what the proposed site plans are for the two sites we've been talking about. Obviously, the Walden Street basketball courts and then the old middle school site. With the financial breakdowns underneath this, what asked for, and then some additional costs that'll go with each of those sites listed on the bottom that aren't included in the construction costs above and beyond. So the first, and this, all this information will be up on the website tomorrow morning as well. So, you know, the first one is the Walden Street site, obviously fire station only. You know, it's a little hard to see on that plan there, but it's, you know, the apparatus bay similar to what we had laid out before with four bays, two smaller auxiliary bays with a smaller equipment. This site alone would accommodate just under, you know, 40 parking spots or so. Almost 50, sorry. And then we, the turnaround that we talked about, there's a turnaround there at the school. We'd be creating that to try to make safer and increase the capacity if the schools were up off. So the roof towers would have a little less time to queue up on the road and also, you know, formulate the walkways, you know, handicap accessible down there so they could, you know, from up, up above and then get down there to the, the new pickup area. You know, this site, if you, the cost on the next page, if you want me to scroll down. You know, this comes in at roughly 34, based on our consultant's reviews, 34,669. What's not in that price is what I put on the bottom. It's about $1 million to move the basketball courts from there to a new location. So that would be above and beyond. So the total cost of this option would be 35,669. The next site is the, the upper portion on Pauline Street and Waldemar. You know, we lock there. Moving the, sorry, can you get that up? It's coming up now. We'll wait for the slide to pop up so that people at home can see. There it comes. Little delay. Same, you know, similar layout, four bays, apparatus bay, two auxiliary bays. You know, this has the 27 parking with, again, 12 and 7, almost the same parking layout. This shows the existing gymnasium to remain with the middle school and the auditorium being taken down, and obviously the rink stays. The benefit to this one that we don't have at the other one is the equipment gets to drive through. We've got the access road in the back, so the equipment will be able to drive through and then, you know, pull out onto Pauline and return back, you know, down Brookfield. The cost on this option is a little higher. It's the, the construction cost alone of the 34, 345, 34,345,000. However, you know, and Director Calus here too, but there is a old stormwater pipe that needs to be relocated under there and also the additional cost, you know, to demo the buildings. So that's about an additional $4 million to make those necessary repairs and then add the additional demo cost. So that brings this option in at 39,345. So more than the basketball courts for sure, but I know we wanted to look at both options. But that stormwater pipe is something that has to be dealt with. It's got to be relocated. It's got to be increased in size as well. It's sort of the bottleneck now for all the water coming off of, you know, French Square. That was something that needed to be addressed, and that would have to be done, you know, if this project were to happen, so. So the goal is, is to create, you know, a survey question, right? Try and look at the different softwares available. What I'm thinking in the layout is, you know, we'd have the two questions, you know, option one and option two. And then option one would list, you know, a brief summary of what I just talked about, what the total cost is, but then have a link to show these two pages, you know, the layout and the breakdown of the construction costs. And the same thing for option two. And then you'd have an option down below which you prefer option one or two, and that would give the residents a chance to vote. Sort of get an idea of what, you know, if we bring a dead exclusion forward, what may be acceptable to the residents, so. And that's where we stand on that.
Counselor Demakow.
I was actually, I actually made the motion back at the beginning of my career here on, on the council about rebuilding the Athletee Coming School playground. And rough cost of that was about $200,000 to rebuild a brand-new playground at the Coming School. My question is, why does it cost $1 million to move a basketball court?
It might be a little under, but we wanted to be on the conservative side because it's not just creating the asphalt and striping it, it's also moving the lighting. You know, the infrastructure work that has to happen underneath, drainage work for the water that sheds off. So when you're doing it new, it's gonna be a little more pricey. I mean, maybe that cost comes in at 750, I don't know, but I wanted to err on the side of caution.
And does it have to go at Ingleside Park?
Yes, I think it's important that it stays in the area.
It stays in the area, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Counselor Tassanari.
You mentioned a difference in cost in the demolition of the existing middle school. What it looks like here, from comparing the both pages, it looks like it's about $500,000. Is that really the only difference, to take, take down the building and remove it?
Are you talking about in the construction cost that they list?
Yeah.
No, that's, their number's a little light, so that's why I added money. I think it's gonna be closer to the $3.5 million just for the stormwater. So there's really only about $500,000 in there for demo.
Okay.
Yeah.
So it'd be about $1 million more than...
Yeah, because I've already got prices without asbestos of 1.1, I think. So, yeah, so you add asbestos, I think it's gonna come close to the, you know, the 1.5. So that's why we wanted to add a little more money in there.
So you're thinking about another million on top of the 696 that's in this first, under that first? If you want, I don't know, no one else can really see it in the...
No, I get it, and then we'll be able to tomorrow. Not on the mill, I would say a little, little less than that, probably $800 or so, yeah.
And then another 3, 3, 3.5?
For the stormwater to move the pipe, yeah. And I want to be clear about that, that's work that's gotta get done, so.
Eventually, that's gonna need to be done anyways, right?
Whatever happens there, yeah, but if we do this project there, it's gotta get done, so, right. But that's a cost that's just tied to it, so.
Thank you.
Thank you for this presentation. It's really helpful to see it, you know, line, you know, depicted this way. I, I had a couple of questions. One was the flooding that's happening on Walden. Does this resolve, do the costs associated with this Walden Street option accommodate for some, some of the mitigation?
It will take care of the water that sheds off the hill and also the water that, you know, has created this, water that sheds away from the building through roof drains and things like that. There'll be stormwater and storage capacity on the site, so that'll all be dealt with there. But as far as the other flooding that happens down close to the apartment building, that will continue to happen, but this building is elevated and, you know, down that end of the street, we don't tend to get the problems. But we'll assist with that because we'll be taking care of it, and there'll be more place for volume, you know, under the parking lot.
So driving through Walden, the trucks won't have to drive through a foot of water, or will...
They could go the other way and go around, you know, so they just come out and go up Pauline, you know, if, if there happened to be a flooding event going on at that time, you know, which they would have to, you know, deal with anyway. But they can go up and go up Pauline just like they would if they were up at the, the other site that we first chose last year, so.
It'd be nice if we were able to include a little more water storage and so that way they would have that Walden Street exit to go up to Main Street and then, you know, resolve any problems that way. I would hate to see them have to go through Pauline through the heart of a tight, you know, a busy intersection. So is there any way we could get an estimate added to that?
You're not, you're not gonna stop all that. I mean, it doesn't happen, it happens when we have the heavy rains and the storms, so it's not, you know, obviously that frequent, but that, you're not gonna fix that problem with adding additional volume here. I mean, we'll be able to pick up the water here, which will help the problem, but no. I mean, we're gonna have to fix the stormwater issue there, and there's some other stuff that'll have to be done, but that'll be the long-term fix for that.
The other question I had was the money that you estimated for the, the water redirection underneath the old middle school, that you estimated around 3.5 million?
Yeah, that's what Director McCallan and I talked about, yes.
So what I was wondering though was, we may be able to get money from the state for some of that, and that, some of that bonded, or some of that...
Only if we do housing there, that, that's tied to housing.
I see, so none of that would be coming?
Maybe, maybe, no, not, you'd have to do a housing project to get access to that, so.
Aren't there other grants though out there for demo costs of large buildings like, like this for these palaces like ours?
There might be, I mean, we'll certainly try to get the grants, but we have to put the accurate numbers in there so people know what they're voting for, so.
But this basically doesn't include the opportunity cost of keeping the firehouse on, off of the old, so if we were to do the Walden Street, we now often leave the old middle school to generate revenue.
Potentially, whatever the council decides to do with it, yeah.
So that opportunity cost is not included, but it should, it should be stated in the survey that this leaves the old middle school area, you know, opportunistic for, you know, either some residential, the closing out the Palmyro, Waldemar area. It just needs to be stated, this leaves that area as an opportunity for revenue generation.
Sure.
Vice President Peltier.
Thank you. When we send the survey out, I just want to make sure that it's very clear the total amounts, like, so these numbers in addition to the demo costs and that...
Right, that'll be listed in there for sure.
Yeah. And then also, these plans are very different from the original proposed plan, so I think it would also be important to say this leaves out the police station down the road and like a few other things that we had talked about with that, just to, to show the progress in, in the plans, you know what I mean? I'm not articulating that.
No, absolutely, no, just to identify it's fire station only. You know, we're not looking for joint public safety here, yeah.
Yeah, and, and like Counselor Munson said, just other pros and cons for both sites in addition to the dollar amount of plans. And then I think there are some objective pros and cons. There's obviously some subjective ones as well, but I think it's important to list that.
Counselor Costin.
Thank you, town manager. Well done, well put. Numbers are there, what we were looking for. Needless to say, costs are somewhat similar, within what, a thousand bucks of each other. And is this a, I don't, I'm not sure if I saw the frontal view here. Is that a two-story? Or is that a single-story?
They're both two-story, the farthings above the, at the apparatus bay.
Okay, okay. And to, to Counselor Munson's concerns with regards to the middle school, if that was to be utilized for this fire station, that would take, potentially, take a revenue generator away from the town. So I think that would be not that advantageous for the town with everything going on at this current moment. I would just like to entertain something with regards to 2017. Counselor Aiello made a wonderful presentation in this same room with our golden child, Michael Aruzioni, with regards to a community center in that middle school area. I think with the 2030 coming up, I think the 50th anniversary for that, that championship and the Mike Aruzioni goal, et cetera, would be very fitting for that site as it relates to a community development center named after Mr. Aruzioni, Mike Aruzioni. So don't, don't take your eyes off of that potential as well. I just want to put that out there. I would prefer that we, that we designated one location only and, you know, maybe eliminate some, some extra work here as it relates to eliminating the middle school as a location. So I don't know if I can make a motion for that, Mr. President. Can I make a motion?
I think the thought with this was to give the voters, give the citizens an opportunity to weigh in on both sites. You know, it's given us an idea, a concept. Eventually, we're going to, you know, we're going to vote. If it goes on a, a dead exclusion, the council will vote on a project. This just gives, gives us more insight as to what the constituents are looking for. Our thing is education, to make sure that they understand. And I think, I don't know if it was Counselor Munson or Tassanari that said that we want to, it might have been Vice President Peltier that said we want to articulate the pluses and minuses along with the cost. I mean, the cost is a number, but we want to articulate potential revenue losses or gains or whatever it might be, other things that have to be done. You know, we, the basketball courts, we also want to make sure that school pickup and drop-off is as safe as humanly possible. And that's why we've tried to accommodate that in the, in the turnaround because there's gonna be less potentially parking on Walden Street. We want to make that as easy and seamless as possible and as safe as possible. So I think there's a lot that goes into it, but we want to go out there and say, we're not just telling you what we're doing, we're asking for information. Eventually, though, the, the council will make a decision as to when and which project, potentially one of these two, I would hope, will go on a ballot for a dead exclusion. And a dead exclusion, very different than an override. Uh, and a debt exclusion very different than an override, a debt exclusion is something if it was voted on, whatever, January first of twenty twenty-five, it's something that wouldn't hit the tax rolls until, uh, first quarter of twenty twenty-seven or twenty twenty-eight. And then it comes on incrementally where, where an override just hits all at once and continues. Uh, debt exclusion comes on incrementally as the borrowing is done, you don't borrow the whole thirty-six million or forty million at once, you borrow it in increments, um, and that's how it comes on your taxes. So education is a huge part of any of these pieces, but, um, thank you for that question, um, I lost my way. Uh, Councilor Swob.
Councilor Costas, I, I think that, I think you said it's a million dollar difference, as I read this, it's more four million, right? The difference in, in the bottom line is thirty-five, six and thirty-nine.
These are under the line numbers thirty-five, six versus, versus thirty-nine.
Vice President Peltier.
Um, I'd also like to request that we include information about our current stations and all the codes we're not up to and all the reasons why. It is very important, many, many people do understand the state of our current stations, but that's something we talked a lot about on the Firehouse Committee, and I think that's important to bring up back to top of mind, like, we don't have the appropriate facilities, we don't have the appropriate safety things, we don't, there's a lot left to be desired in the current stations.
Councilor President. Councilor Demaco then Tassanari.
Real quick, um, on the second site, uh, at the old middle school site, was there any talk about refurbishing the, uh, gymnasium? If we're gonna keep the gymnasium, we're not gonna leave it decrepit, right? It's gonna?
No, no, after, that'd be the, you know, second phase of the plan, right? We didn't include it here, but yeah, that's something we'd have to find money for and look to, if you're gonna keep it, then.
Okay, so that al- also would raise the cost in the long term too?
Well, if you choose to, but there's also talk about maybe a community center, it's not gonna be proud of this project, it won't be proud of the fire station, but yeah.
Thank you.
Councilor Tassanari.
I'm gonna get a little out of, get a little out of order here, this is new firehouse business, but I'm gonna ask you about old firehouse, how's the floor on the Pauline Street?
Yep, we're just wait, we're moving now, I just saw one of the engines is out, we're trying to find a new home for the, uh, high-water vehicle, which we will have shortly, and we're gonna move the other engine over there temporarily, and then we're gonna put the steel plates down. Probably be a spring, we'll have some, get some cost this winter and come in for a spring repair. Uh, in the meantime, we're gonna get the basement cleaned out, probably do a, uh, the small retaining well, we have to build on the concrete block, we'll get that rolling, you know, we can do that, um, piecemeal as we go and then be ready to hit it with the spring, but yeah, there's a lot of, a lot happening with that, but, um, you know, more to follow once we get some fine-tuned numbers.
And right now, there's nothing for us to find or re-appropriate funding for?
Not yet, no, no, nothing yet.
Councilor Munson.
So I just wanted to throw this out there to get it in the, on the kind of like timeline. So it seems as though we're getting the survey out in the next couple of weeks.
Yep.
And then, uh, that'll go out via email or a website or?
Social media, website, uh, we'll do a blast, we'll probably do maybe in reverse nine-one-one, let people know where it is on the website, so we can try to get as many people to participate in the survey as possible.
So then we would try to reduce any kind of redundancy, so no one could vote twice.
Correct.
Um, my, uh, my point of actually speaking in this moment was to actually create a kind of a timeline that we would, uh, so we have a ballot on November, we have a voting on November for, uh, the override. But for something of this nature, with this firehouse and possibly also three A, we would have a subsequent vote that we could do a special election force either at the end of the year or at the beginning of the new year. Is that something feasible?
It'd be up for the county, yeah, we have to, it's a separate election.
It'd be up for the council and, uh, obviously anything on three A, we would like to do well before the end of the year, but, uh, not that we would like to do, I would like to do, but we would like to, we have a obligation to, to give an answer by December thirty-first. As far as this, it could go on a special election in February, March, April, May, June, the only thing, you know, you'd just be cognizant of the cost of the election. But yeah, I think it's something that's incredibly important.
If the town council, we would decide, we could decide easily before December thirty-first in any meeting regarding three A, but if the citizens were to vote for three A, then we would have to have a special election, correct?
Yeah, i- if the council was to vote on, and again, we're getting off the firehouse, but if the council was to vote on a recommendation from the planning board and if the council was to vote yes, I would assume that we would have, uh, you know, a petition drawn up, we would have, we would do an election as soon as possible. That, obviously, if we voted December twentieth, um, they would still have the opportunity, even if that vote was in January or February, to offset it, you know, to, to go over the same thing that happened in Milton, basically. So, um, yes, I bet, you know, and I was gonna say this earlier, but just moved on for the sake of time and everything else, but the, the citizens always have a right to vote. If we, if we chose, chose to vote and if that vote was to comply with the planning board's recommendation, the citizens absolutely have the right to petition that and get a, you know, with a number of signatures, get them certified and have a special election to offset that vote, that's what happened in Milton.
It's our obligation regardless of the cost, and but I'm just trying to.
Oh yeah, absolutely.
I would, I would say that the benefit would have of having the, the special election with the two major questions at the same time would be a, a good way to save fifteen and twenty grand.
But hopefully you, you wouldn't need the, you know, hopefully, well, see how, see how, uh, the recommendation goes. All right. Uh, new business, um, I did ask and, and I apologize for the long wait, the two-hour wait, but I did ask Meredith, Meredith to come, there's been a lot of talk about mosquitoes and West Nile and such, and I think it's incredibly important. And years ago, we just used to go around and spray everything, and I guess those days are gone, and, so if you could just give us an update as best you can, Meredith, I greatly appreciate it, if you wanna come and sit up, yeah, that would be great.
So yeah, it seems like this has been, um, thank you, very much, um, in the media, um, I even caught some of it on the national news over the weekend, talking about West Nile virus, triple E. Um, so as the town manager said, we had one, so if, if you're not familiar, but I think most people are, um, northeast mosquito control samples, our town, like, of a lot of other towns, um.
I was just gonna say the same thing, it's in the back, you can barely hear you without any noise.
Oh, okay, sorry. Um, so they, there were multiple spots in the town that they sample mosquitoes, um, and we, we found out last Thursday that we had one pool of sample, um, test positive with mosquito. As town manager said, it is, there are two, there's, there's, um, there, it's a mosquito that feeds on birds, um, so, um, and it was in the northeast quadrant. So unknown specifically where it is, but I think we could probably assume it's like up in the Highlands area. We do not have any human cases, they elevated our risk, I, you know, we were on, you know, the, the risk elevation watch yesterday on the news. Um, they called out Winthrop specifically for unknown reason because we do not have human cases, we had, there are human cases surrounding us in other communities, so, but we do not have, um, have human cases here. We will get our results tomorrow as to the next batch that they tested on either Monday or Tuesday, and we'll see where we go from there. I think that, you know, it's, it behooves everybody to just be mindful of it, where their, you know, their mosquito repellent, if you have kids that are practicing outside, um, be cautious with that. I also think it's important for people to, to know, to also remember that in communities that aren't in Winthrop, so if you're traveling to other communities, it, it would be smart to know the risk, not just for West Nile, but also for triple E. You know, right now down in southeastern Massachusetts, which seems like very foreign, um, in a different part of the, the world, um, they are experiencing very high rates of mosquitoes testing positive for West Nile virus. And as much as both of these diseases that, these viruses that we're talking about, um, are very rare, um, triple E really carries a heavy burden, um, for, for those that get infected with it, um, as does West Nile virus, but the treatment is a lot, is a, is a lot more positive for, for West Nile virus. So, you know, we're all gonna be thinking about going, um, apple picking out in different parts of, you know, in Worcester County most likely, think about triple E, think about bringing your, your mosquito spray and think about long, um, long sleeves also. It's just my, my spiel.
Thank you so much. Um, any questions for Meredith, uh, Vice President Peltier?
Thank you. Uh, what are the signs of being infected by any of these things, just so I don't run to the hospital with a mosquito?
Great question, so, um, so West Nile virus, um, really kind of comes on more so what they say is like flu-like symptoms. In about, the majority of people don't even know that they're positive for it. In about one percent of people, um, you can develop, um, encephalo, enceph- encephalitis as, um, as a result of it. It's a very low chance of that, um, so that would be headache, kind of some neurological, um, some, you know, some nerve pain, things like that. But that's in one percent of the people who even become infected with West Nile virus, the majority of folks will have malaise, um, sometimes you'll see, um, uh, rash of sorts. But yeah, I mean, West Nile virus first presented in this country in nineteen ninety-nine, so we're not talking like a long duration, but it has very much expanded into, you know, throughout the northeast, and now we're seeing it, you know, in parts of the world that we didn't see it before.
Uh, Councilor Costas again.
Yeah, just a question, I think the town manager mentioned that there was a number or you can make a call, were your own individual property to be sprayed, is that on the website?
Ah.
It's on Northeast Mosquito Control's website and there's a link on our website, I believe, but yeah.
There's a link, okay, thank you.
Yeah, they're getting hundreds of requests, obviously, with everything going on, I talked to them today about that.
Again, thank you so much, Meredith, for all you're doing, especially for this right now, and I appreciate your time.
I haven't seen you guys in a while.
That's a good thing in a lot of ways.
You have to stay till the end too.
Uh, we have a fifteen-minute public comment period. Uh, yeah, uh, start in the back, first hand up, John, and then Diane, Diana.
Thank you, it's ten minutes now, John, I'm proud, I'm appreciative, I, a little bit of follow-up on my other comments about three A. In response to Councilor Munson's concerns about the potential impact, financial impact on the town, uh, do the state decide to withhold grants and so forth for the town? I totally reject that concern because based upon my own experience and a couple of lawyers that I've spoken to the last couple of months that are pretty good themselves, so. Should the state decide, for example, any action by the U. F. K. General or anyone else, the governor's office and so forth, that is a challengeable action that, that this town, you know, can challenge the court. So just the attempt by the state to withhold that kind of grant has a, you know, can, can be challenged. I've been involved in those kind of things for a long time. Seventy years ago, there was another big state agency that was threatening the town of Winthrop, still does to Sunday morning, called the Massachusetts Foredepartment. And, uh, at the time, when I first got involved with this, seventy years ago, um, Mass Board, this huge, huge state agency with a lot of power, including immigrant power and so forth, was challenging for, uh, the town of Winthrop to reexist in some ways. But we're calling the rest of the town with New Vermont here, uh, there and so forth. And we kind of got in the town, I was a part of it, where we put together a citizen coalition, so I'm not to this one, by the way, and working with the town at the time and linking up with other municipalities around, particularly the city of Boston. And I linked up, uh, reached out to some of our neighbors in East Boston and also in here and so forth, and we fought Mass Board's attempts to impose its will on this town legally and financially, and we won. Uh, and it took us about two years, but we won, and I've got the documentation on that, anybody wants to see it. So the same court apply, or would apply to any attempt by, uh, by the state to withhold funding, uh, cut a town for any of the four grants, uh, you know, listed in the three A legislation, okay? They are challengeable, it's not a fait accompli, and we can do that, thank you.
Thank you. Diana.
Diana, Vian's precinct two, ironically, the reason I was late tonight is because I was coming, little known fact about me, I am in the D A R, and I'm actually the parliamentarian for my D A R chapter, and tonight we were going over the bylaws in our board director's meeting, so that's why I was late tonight. I have to tell you, this is not how things are done, okay? You don't make new laws, you don't go off script, we have a town charter, um, it doesn't involve the, uh, you know, disenfranchised withhold citizens, uh, which was, uh, which was, um, ratified tonight by, uh, Town Council President Luteri, unilaterally without a vote. So I sent you everything that you needed to understand that the zoning law and initiative petition process, which is part of, uh, Article nineteen of our Declaration of Rights in Massachusetts, cannot be intermingled, there's lots of case law on this. And nonetheless, again, no vote, uh, a- and it, it was simply ratified. It was a little fuzzy when it was just in the agenda, but it was absolutely a hundred percent, unequivocally rejected tonight by one person without a vote by this town council. Um, I actually feel a little bit bad for blaming Attorney Sipoleta for what's hap- what just happened, because what I saw was him sort of like reasoning with the town council and, and giving, giving everybody the lowdown, having understood what I sent, and I saw one person just digging in. Uh, so, uh, shame on me for, for blaming the wrong person. That being said, uh, this isn't a zoning ordinance, we're not saying residential A now has to be residential B, or you can only have a, a third of a parking space if you live here. This is a thousand percent about zoning, right? I'm not sure what you expect the planning board to do about it, that's sort of interesting for them. That being said, uh, a little bit of happy news, we have moved the exemption case, which would just completely erase this conversation to Superior Court today. So if you're genuinely interested in making this go away for our town, we are, as I've written to Lydia Edwards, I live two point seven miles away from her house and she's exempt and I'm not, for whatever reason, okay? At the end of the day, we don't have any train stations, they have five, we are more dense than East Boston, we have multiple, multiple reasons, we are an environmental justice community, we have the N W O R I, we have the, we have the airport on our land, we're one point six square miles, and we are one of the most dense communities in the nation. I will send you, what we have submitted to Superior Court is strong, and if you join with the people on this, I think we have an excellent chance. Um, that being said, after tonight's projection, uh, we'll be there in the morning to pick up the supplemental petition.
Thank you. Tom.
My name's Tom DeDaria, precinct three, uh, and as Tony said, uh, I've been newly, uh, appointed to the, um, climate commissioner. Well, the challenge before us about climate change is enormous. We have a choice, we could do nothing, or we could change Winthrop into an extension of the Boston Harbor, uh, uh, National Park and all, leave. Or, or something in between, the something in between is enormous, it requires us to understand climate, understand coastal geology, if we're gonna do something and build something, we have to understand engineering. And if we're gonna build something, we have to understand finance, cuz it's gonna cost a lot of money, uh, then there's a, a, a component of insurance. What about houses that are in flood zones, do we, uh, uh, insure them, uh, when commercial companies won't insure them? The, the state or national flood insurance, uh, uh, peters out because there are, there are towns all over the country looking for that money, it might not pay so much, what do we do about that? Uh, do we lift up houses? Which ones do we lift up? Uh, so there's a, a sociological, sociological component to it, there is, uh, a psychological component, uh, there will be people who don't wanna move, no matter what. So there's all these things that have to fit together. Now, in this room, I sense a great energy, a sort of spirit of seventy-six energy, uh, of patriotism, uh, which can all back into protecting our town from the peril, the threat of sea level rise and all the things it's gonna require us to do and think about. It's a long process, and it's a difficult process, and we can all pitch together to do that, to solve that, to work on it, it's gonna be a long, long thing, and let's all, all pull together on that in that regard.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President. So, Tom, so far, I think, uh, what I heard tonight, we're gonna get sandbags. I don't know how many of these sandbags we need, but it'll probably be a lot, so we're not gonna get a, a burn for Morton Street, Sands, Main Street Ward, we're gonna offer, I think we're gonna offer the neighborhood a sandbag. We need seawalls, we need heightened seawalls, we need everything but sandbags, let's, let's get something clear here, sandbags are gonna be no good whatsoever, the water's already reached your house, it's gonna go in your house with sandbags. As far as, uh, Max Tazanari's, uh, committee, uh, the strategic committee, intergovernmental strategic committee, I believe that's your committee, Mr. Chek, how that, uh, thanks, anyways, uh. The town website for this month, and there's no meeting scheduled. I wonder why that is. The very first meeting, you said it was a very important issue in the town, getting money from Mass Water Resources and, and Mass Board. So far, I haven't heard anything, there were, and I commented in the meetings that you had, and my comments don't show up in the three minutes that you posted so far, so I don't know where the rest of the minutes are. Are we going to have another meeting with the strategic committee concerning this issue, and are we going to hire an outside consultant? I thought I'd want to, but I think, uh, it's very much needed for this twenty to fifty million dollar, uh, get from, uh, Mass Board and Mass Water Resources. I hope to schedule a meeting this month, I hope someone puts this committee up to schedule a meeting, I don't know why it's being hidden, uh, do you have either, is it a secret meeting, you have it at six o'clock?
I don't think there was a secret meeting.
I don't think there was a secret meeting.
It didn't say on the agenda what you were gonna be discussing, the...
Executive discussion.
So, I think you're supposed to mention what you're gonna go into discussion about on the agenda, I didn't see it there. I hope we get this straightened out, I hope we hire a professional person that's done a lot of mitigation with this type of issue, and, and leave it up to the experts. Thank you.
Yes.
Very quick, because I don't wanna go over the fifteen minutes. I just, car on the left...
Nathan Precinct, please.
Car on the left, Precinct. Just to refer, just to reference the fire station plans, so, both of them had lots of parking spaces, I don't know, I don't know how many people work for the fire department, so that might be adequate, it seems like a lot, if there is excess, especially with both plans being next to the parking, next to the parks, it'd be great if there was excess parking for the people who work at the fire station, we could use that for if people wanted to drive to the park, that would just be, or if you're just going to the school, teachers could use that as a place to park if they're working at the school, just making, if it's gonna be a city parking thing, why not just make it open to everybody instead of just the fire? That is, if there is more than just four, the people who work at the fire department.
Thank you. Yes, Karen.
Hi, Carol Pachellis, precinct four. I need some clarification, please, regarding the meaning of overlay. The example has been that if Fort Heath burns down, because it's an overlay zone, that we don't have to build as many units in the new building as we would in the old, it still doesn't answer the question, let's assume Fort Heath isn't going to burn down, and it exists with developable land, the very essence of three A is to say, we want developable land so more units can be built. You gotta answer the question, how many maximum units can be built on our property, on Seal Harbor one and three, and on Governor's Park? We need to know that before we can make any decision, because that's gonna impact us directly. Also, so that's the maximum number of units, also, we're pitting the neighborhoods against each other with this whole concept of flood management, we need to know what grants specifically cover for flood management. They are not in the four grants that John talked about that have been legislated, they might be the add-on grants by the executive branch, we don't even know if those are legitimate yet. Also, the M V P, does that cover, I don't know, does that cover flood management, the M V P? I don't know, we need to know, we're gonna know how this gets covered. In terms of, it's been a long time issue, I empathize with people in those neighborhoods, we have to address it, the grants that are unquestionable, grants that in fact, we're not, you mentioned it last time, Councilor Leteri, they're not guaranteed, and the funding isn't guaranteed, and we're competing against three hundred and fifty communities, and ironically, we're saying we don't have to build any more units, why are they gonna reward us with grant money, but we're not even gonna build any more units, according to your analysis? There will be more units, and they'll be developable, this plan won't even pass the state level if we don't show developable land, that means they want more units, and you're not taking into account reconfiguration. Fort Heath tomorrow, under this three A, could reconfigure some of those units and double or triple their occupancy, how do you deal with those number of people, and that kind of occupancy, and the number of cars and parking, and all the issues surrounding that? These questions must be answered before we're irresponsible in passing something that we're gonna live to regret, that it's gonna impact not only our zones, but the entire community, all right? And they're not gonna reward us for grants if we're not doing anything, so, they clearly want us to do something. And the state, when people said, what difference does it make? State control is state control, if we lose local control, we're sunk. You've gotta be, have the process of review and analysis, and our budgets have to have input, and you have to have some say on what's going on, you've done a great job so far, keep developing, but don't target certain neighborhoods, develop all around the town and get credit for it. This is a bad law that we should never, ever support, we're gonna live to regret it. Thank you.
Thank you, one more question.
Real quick, the, the M V P grant, I believe, was for flood mitigation research on Morton Street, North End overzoned market basket in their plan, their plan passed the state, so I reason to think that our plan won't pass the state, but what I wanna say is, as mentioned earlier, that the residents of Seal Harbor are the most affected here, I respectfully disagree. Any imposition to the residents of Seal Harbor, or Fort Heath, or anywhere else is entirely theoretical at this point, entirely theoretical, all right? What is happening in Morton Street, in the areas that are at risk, is very concrete and very real, and I invite outside counselors to come down and see my next-door neighbor who keeps sandbags year-round in her driveway now, and the fact that, in Chief Alleghanty's comment last, last week, he got a bit emotional, I'm sure you all heard, we do often feel like we're forgotten, we are not the nicest neighborhood in town, to put it lightly, we are a, you know, what Rep Turco likes to say all the time, a working-class neighborhood. You go down, a couple houses down from me, right on the water is a Winthrop police officer who lives with his five kids, you know, in a house that you wouldn't imagine that many people could fit into, that's what, that's what we are down there. The idea that these theoretical scenarios are more of a threat than what is happening right now, it needs to be tended to, in, with urgency, every month, every year that goes by, increases the risk that the next time someone's gonna lose their home, right? My neighbors have come very close, it's only been cars thus far that they've lost, but their homes have been inundated. It is tough not to feel a little forgotten in this whole thing, because the people seem to be getting the most attention in all this are people who are just speaking about, like, speculative nightmare scenarios. Come down to Morton Street, please, see the actual nightmare scenarios that are happening to us, and that's all of that.
Last question, Joe.
Carol, precinct two, I do urge you to read Diana's exemption, it's a great body of work, it acknowledges the hard work that Winthrop has done over the years, adding density, our fight with flooding, we're forty-five percent flood zone, we do protect Boston Harbor, Dave Hubbard has said that, that we protect the airport, we protect Boston Harbor, who protects us? So, you know, we do deserve an exemption, given all of our compromising geographical limitations that we have, so the exemption is awesome, you, I didn't get to the meeting last week, but you, I think Attorney Sipoleta mentioned it, and I think Tony mentioned it, that it was a possibility of looking for exemption, we've done a lot of work, it would be great if you could look at it, add to it, join us, and we could join together to fight for our community, because we are very unique, and we really do deserve that exemption, we really, really do, from this three A, we really do.
Thank you. Public relations again, the farmers' market dates through this, through this month and October, second and fourth Sunday of the month at Ingleside Park, nine AM to one, again, it's been a fantastic event, I encourage people to attend. On September twenty-sixth, Winthrop Recovery Event at Town Hall, this will be a, a walk from Town Hall down to the center, and we'll have activities at the center with discussions about the recovery program, I encourage you all to attend, it is another fantastic program put on by the CLA team. Thank you all, motion to adjourn by Vice President Belcher, second by Counsel Iello, any discussion on the motion, seeing none, all those in favor say aye. Aye. All those know, I think it's adjourned.